We'll wait for Tom to get seated then we'll proceed. It is nine o'clock or shortly thereafter and we're going to call the meeting to order and then we will, we will start with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. So if you could call the meeting, call the roll call, then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Commissioner Borgson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. Please rise.
(inaudible)
On the Board of Equalization, we have two items to begin with. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization on Tuesday, February 7th, 2012. And item B is to call for a meeting and set February 28th, which is a Tuesday, as a date of for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased values on property.
Motion approved AMB.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote please. Now we're going to have citizens' comments for anything on the Board of Equalization agenda.
Motion passes.
That is not on the Board of Equalization agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to make comments on things not on the agenda?
Is this the time? Oh, we're on the agenda.
Yes, okay. Next, we have resolutions. We have Resolution D, approving corrections for errors in assessment of personal property. E, certified tax correction for centrally assessed personal property, 2011 state tax credit applications. And item F is approving an application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote please.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now we have a Homestead protest, item G.
Mike Goodwelly, Douglas County Assessors Office. If I may summarize briefly, this involves essentially a Homestead protest for a woman named Jenny F. Despain. Ms. Despain has been in the program for many, many years as a full qualifier. This situation is a little bit different in that we have not yet received an application. I think what happened was Ms. Despain got her tax statement in December and instead of having a notation on it for zero tax because of protest, much to her surprise, surprise and chagrin, it like actually had tax liability on it. And so I think she's contacted Mr. Lehan here who has filed a protest but perhaps jumped the gun a little. What I would suggest though is that since he's here, we entertain the discussion and arguments today. When we receive an application from Ms. Despain, we can put it back on the agenda and that might be the appropriate time to vote. Just a couple of other items and I'll yield the floor to Mr. Lehan is we believe absent a significant change in income for Ms. Despain, she would probably qualify this year had we gotten a timely application. And we do not believe this is a situation where the 458 L medical waiver is likely or appropriate. So with that, that's kind of where this stands on the facts.
I appreciate the comments from Mr. Goodwelly. I probably should have called him before I started this process. Ms. Despain was contacted by somebody I've known for many years, Don Despain. His mother turned 95 two Saturdays ago, still lives alone in her house. And for years she had a friend who worked at H&R Block that filed all her paperwork. Unfortunately, the friend, the young friend died last year and she didn't get that done. And she now faces, I think it's a couple thousand dollar tax assessment, which she doesn't have. I'm, I'm going to go back and start over and file the application on her behalf and then it'll come back in front of you. But that's kind of a background story. She's 95, over 95 now, still lives in her house by herself. And although she doesn't have the physical impairments that justify the medical problem, she is, I believe, have a, have a story that I think should allow an exemption and allow her to file a late application. And that's about all I have to say.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I think I know the answer to this, but Mr. Goodwelly, is there anything that we can vote on today to save Mr. Lehan from coming back?
I think absent an application, there really is not anything to vote on. That said, that's why I suggested when we get the application, we can put it back on the agenda to avoid either Mr. Lehan or Ms. Despain having to come back down.
Just trying to help a couple mics out, you know.
Well, this one's the one that needs the help. But if, if you want, I could have Ms. Despain. She offered to come down next time, but I told her that it was a little slick.
Yeah. No, I don't think she needs to do that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I believe that is it. There's no action that needs to be taken.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote please. Now we will convene as the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call please.
Commissioner Borgson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. First, we have the approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, January 10th, 2012.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. No one wishes to speak. Call for the vote. Next, we have citizens' comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on anything not on the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections? Seeing none, we will go to item three, which is the report from the Director of Corrections, Dr. Mark Foxall.
Good morning, everyone. Mark Foxall, Director of Corrections. We have a full agenda this morning. I will begin with my monthly report. I then have a few personnel announcements. Mike Myers will introduce to the board a young man who successfully completed programming at a day reporting center. Finally, Mike will update you on the Second Chance Act planning grant. We are seven months into the fiscal year. DCC continues to operate under budget. I'm pleased to announce that the new intergovernmental services agreement with Immigration Customs Enforcement, ICE, was signed by both parties. The effective date of the new per diem rate, which is $84, was February 2nd of this year. Community corrections counts were on the uptick last month. House arrest placed 138 offenders during the month, which is well above the average number of placements. In our work release program, total admissions for the month were much higher than a typical month, placed 92 individuals into that program during the month of January. A new community service partnership with Goodwill provides work release participants with a five-day-a-week participation opportunity. Skills, training, and possible job placement will result for individuals providing service, services through this agreement. Day reporting averaged 59 participants during the month of January, which is approximately 20 percent higher than normal. In the GED program, six individuals earned their GED in day reporting during the month of January and two individuals earned their GED in the main jail facility during the same month. Taking a look at our population for the month of January, we had 1,787 intakes last month, 1,659 releases, and 334 transfers. Our ADP, or average daily population, was 1,146, which is a little bit higher than normal, but that's due to the, to the good weather that we have, I'm sure, and some other, some other factors. The average daily population for females has increased again, however, the third female, female housing unit remains closed. Felony and misdemeanor pre-traw populations were up slightly for the month. Medical department conducted 1,348 intake screenings, 426 physical health assessments, and 333 mental health assessments. Moving to personnel, I'd like to announce that we made Correctional Officer II promotions last month. Those individuals promoted are Megan Main, Jeffrey Geo, Roland Peters, Robin Keeler, Kristy Mertz, Robert Fisher, Victor Slate, and Ashley Harris. Our new Correctional Officer Academy class started in January. The graduation date is February 24th, 1:00 PM. So this is an open invitation for you to participate or attend if your schedules permit. At this time, I would like to invite our Community Corrections Manager to the podium along with Mr. Jones Steinbach and his wife Tracy. This is a surprise announcement, actually. Joe is completely in the dark. In December 2011, we submitted to the American Jail Association a nomination on behalf of our GED instructor, Joe Steinbach, for Civilian Employee of the Year. In part, that nomination reads, "Joe Steinbach began his part-time GED instructor, began as a part-time GED instructor in 2007. In late 2008, he was hired full-time. His impact was felt immediately after he began service here. Student engagement and enthusiasm for instruction increased dramatically. As a result, classroom success began to skyrocket. Prior to Joe's arrival, the Community Corrections GED program at Douglas County Department of Corrections averaged approximately 15 graduates per year. Forty-five people achieved their GED under Joe's instruction in 2008. In 2009, Joe's first full calendar year of full-time employment, 58 individuals achieved their GED. In 2010, that total of 58 graduates was equaled when another 58 individuals also attained their GED. Through the first 11 months of 2011, a total of 54 individuals have achieved their GED under Joe's instruction. During Joe's tenure, including part-time and full-time employment since 2007, over 250 individuals have received their GED. This month, we received official notification that Joe was selected as the American Jail Association's Civilian Employee of the Year." According to the letter, according to the letter from the AJA, "Dear Mr. Steinbach, congratulations. You have been chosen as the recipient of the American Jail Association's Civilian Employee of the Year Award for 2012. This award will be presented at the AJA's 31st Annual Training Conference and Jail Expo on Wednesday, April 25th, during our annual banquet, awards banquet in Reno, Nevada. As part of the award presentation, you have the opportunity to give a two- to three-minute acceptance speech." So, I present to you, Mike, if you have a few words, and then Joe and his wife Tracy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. It is indeed an honor to be a part of this announcement. I've been sneaking behind Joe's back for several weeks now, including with his, with his lovely wife Tracy, to get her here this morning unbeknownst to Joe so that she could share in this moment. So I appreciate your cooperation and your deceptiveness. Joe is a true asset to Douglas County and in particular to Community Corrections. If I could clone him, I certainly would. And, you know, he is truly a treasure. So with that, Joe, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mike. Thank you, buddy.
Joe Steinbach, GED Inspector, DRC of Community Corrections, Douglas County Department of Corrections. I'm very, very shocked and pleasantly surprised. And a few things I want to point out. First of all, Mike and Mark are just absolutely awesome to work for. They share the same philosophies and visions that I do in terms of helping others. I'm truly honored and blessed just to get a chance to be able to help people. I really am. I come in to work every day knowing that I, that I get a chance to make a positive impact with other people and I value that greatly. And to get an award for that is just absolutely crazy. I should be giving you guys awards for letting me do this. I'd be absolutely nothing without my wife Tracy Steinbach and my mom Kathy Steinbach, without their support and encouragement. I'd be absolutely nothing. As well, the staff that we have at the DRC out there is incredibly supportive and motivational and they're great to work with, Justine Wall, Thomas Belton, Sarah Rowland. I just try to keep up with the good work that those guys do and, and I'm truly blessed and truly honored. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, and I do believe we have some Commissioners who'd like to speak. Commissioner Boyle, would you like to go first?
Well, I think, okay. First, I just want to say, you know, congratulations. This is a wonderful program that you're heading up and I think it really shows the attitude of the leadership at Corrections and the, and the kind of philosophy that you have. And I want to say for myself and I think the other Commissioners as well, I'm almost certain, that we support totally what you folks are doing, that this is the sort of thing that needs to be done, that these make big changes in people's lives. That the things you're doing get people out of domestic violence, it gets people jobs, it gets self-respect, it brings families together. I mean, the things you're doing have far-reaching effects in the community. And I just am really proud of the work that you're doing and I'm very proud of the leadership that you have that supports you, including your lovely wife Tracy.
Thank you so much.
So, and I know before you leave, we all want to shake your hand, so, including Tracy. So you all come, march right by here when this all gets through, okay?
Sounds good.
Thanks. Good to see you. And you do represent, I think, really what government and county employees are all about. We take, the counties get a bad rap a lot of time, the county employees, but really this is what county government's all about. These are dedicated people that really work hard at what they do. And you're just a really good example of what happens when we have the right people in the right place.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. And this is an example of how we, the county board, our department heads, our elected officials, are trying to make a huge impact in the community. Now, the pride, the self-esteem, the job opportunities that open up once somebody gets their GED, it's just amazing. So again, from all of us, thank you.
Thank you.
And please, come out here and we'd like to shake your hand.
Come this way. I really appreciate what you do. It's just fabulous. Okay, thanks for speaking. And no gambling.
Congratulations. You're awesome. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Mike.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And thank you for standing behind us. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda. At this time, I would ask Mike to return to the podium with Jonathan Ritchie, a recent day reporting client.
Good morning, Commissioners. Once again, Mike Myers, the Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. Here to reintroduce to you a young man who you met a couple of weeks ago at the Criminal Justice Center, Jonathan Ritchie, John. He did exceptionally well during his time that he served in the day reporting center program and continues to work hard to move his life forward in the right direction. And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to him.
Jonathan Ritchie. I'm not really sure other than that how to introduce myself. Good morning.
Good morning.
It was about, good morning. It was about 13 days ago now, I believe, I was released from the Community Corrections Center and their day reporting program. I do have a small criminal history. It's quite colored though, as you may remember from our previous meeting. And I was, I was in there on my third DUI and I, you know, put in an application to go to their day reporting center and I wasn't sure what to expect. From the things I had heard, it was, it was sort of a, I don't want to say a free-for-all, but it was more of a college campus sort of environment, by all means. And then when I got there, it was, it was nothing what I expected, you know? For the first couple of days, you know, you, you do your intake and then they, they kind of get to know you and then they, they give you a class schedule. And the class schedule that they create for you is based on your offense. And it was slow to start with and then as it picked up, I, I gathered quite a bit of information and I learned quite a bit about myself and the way I thought and how the way I thought put me where I was. Through the instructors down there, the officers, and just the employees, I, for lack of better terms, I, I got a new lease on my own life because it gave me a new direction. I had been in and out of a kitchen since I was 15 and the type of people that you surround yourself with in that particular environment, as I, as I believe I stated last time, I mean, they, they need to make something out of nothing. And the only people I know how to do that are criminals. And so, again, with, with the help of, of the instructors and the staff and even Mr. Steinbach, who was, who was just up here, I have, I've decided I would like to go into education because I, I figure if I can help adults learn, then what would keep me from, from helping children learn? My experience down there was good. I ran into quite a few people who, you know, I don't think anybody ever wants to be incarcerated by any means. But there were people with, you know, poor attitudes and sort of playing the victim. And then I, I would sit and have conversations with them about, you know, what, what it was that they did to put themselves there. And sometimes they wouldn't think they'd done anything at, anything wrong at all. And then after a few, few minutes, maybe hours, depending on who they were, of conversation, they, they kind of got to realize that, you know, maybe, maybe they did make some mistakes and they wanted to try and learn something, learn a new way of life. And I know that if I hadn't joined the, the day reporting program, that I would probably still have that same very poor attitude. And I really do have them to thank for it, you know? I mean, I had to put forth the effort to, to do that, but without the opportunity being there, by any means, I don't think it would have happened. And then every morning, every few mornings, they, they choose someone to motivationally move the people up there. And I had, I had written something that made, I think, an impact on people. And I know we had kind of gone over this last time, but I'd like to read it again just because I, I think everybody can, can relate. Like I stated, I've been in a kitchen for the majority of my life and I think everybody knows how to read a recipe, be it a handwritten recipe from, from a family member or, or even a recipe off a box. But this is my recipe for bigger and better. Ingredients, one cup criminal, two if needed, but results will vary. One cup addict, any assortment will do. A half a cup of I don't, a half a cup of I won't, and a dash of you can't make me. Sift above ingredients together until well-mixed. Gently fold in the following ingredients with a spoon because a fork is contraband. One cup motivation, one cup education, two cups truth, three and a half cups of reality, and last but not least, one heaping load of honesty. Let mixture sit for a while. Agitate every few days just for good measure. After mentality has been adjusted to taste, send it home, but make it come back. This is where the magic starts to happen. Well-mixed ingredients cause a change in thinking and if we measured everything correctly, behavior. The longer it sits, the larger and more improved the yield. After all, isn't that why we're here, to become bigger and better? And, thank you. And those were the things that I learned that I had to do myself, you know? I had to become motivated myself to change. And the education is definitely something that I think everybody can get something out of down there, you know? They, they teach you different ways to think, different ways to communicate. And, and again, with the people I ran into, it's, it's the form of communication that they use that generally gets them in trouble. Definitely a me-first attitude, you know? And then the truth behind the matter is why, you know, why they're all there, what, what we did to put ourselves in that, that position. And then honesty and reality kind of put everything in check, you know? Without those two items, then, you know, you're just doomed to repeat yourself, I guess, for lack of better terms. And then in the day reporting center, you know, after 30 days, they, they allow you to go home for four hours. And then you have to come back. I remember when I, I was there for two days, I think, and then I had a, a court date, so they, they let me out the front door to walk to the courthouse. It's two blocks, not a big deal. But I walked out and I crossed the street and I just kind of looked around and I said, "They let me out of jail, but I have to willingly go back." And I had no problem with that because I was given liberty. I was given a little piece of liberty back that I had freely given up, you know? And that, that means a lot. And that was definitely the first step toward a new mindset for me. And, and since I've been released, I've, I'm re-enrolling in school. I have a, a meeting this afternoon. I've been filling out job applications and I'm, I'm just trying to make it work. But I also know that, you know, the people that I once considered my friends don't have my best interest in mind. So I, I, I'm trying to find a new group of friends and hopefully I can do that at school with, with people with like-minded interests, as opposed to people that think they already have things in common. And with that, I just, I want to thank you guys for, for the opportunity to come down here. And again, I want to, I want to thank the people down at the Criminal Justice Center.
Thank you. And we do have some Commissioners who wish, we do have some Commissioners who wish to comment. Commissioner Borgson?
Well, thank you again for sharing your story and I actually think the little motivational deal you wrote up should be handed out to the individuals at the day reporting center as they come in, kind of as the day reporting prayer, if you will. But you hit on something while you were speaking this time that I didn't catch the last time and that was, and maybe we did and I don't remember. You talked about how you, you talked with the other individuals that were going through this program and some it would take a little while and some it would take hours in order for things to click in. And that sounds to me like a peer specialist program that maybe we need to have a discussion about. And what that means is we, we have these programs over, like in our Community Mental Health Center where someone's having a, in a crisis, these peer specialists who have been through the same thing that these individuals have been through, help in ways that no medical professional can help, but they have experienced the same thing. So I take this as the same thing for our jails where you have someone who's been through maybe not the exact same thing, but you're in the exact, exact same spot. And some of that stuff has led up, what you've done in your past are the same and have led up to, to be where you are. And so maybe that type of a program, bringing that into our day And so, maybe that type of a program, bringing that into our day reporting center would be beneficial, especially relating, again, to someone who is going through the same thing.
Yeah, it's always nice to have somebody who has sort of been down that same road or can, you know, can vouch for having made the same mistake.
Yes, yes. Well, good luck again and congratulations on your success thus far.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borgerson.
Well, Jonathan, I think your story is incredible. I was not at the meeting that, where you originally read this. I heard all the commissioners were talking about what a really good presentation you made and the things that you said. And I'm very impressed. And I'm really happy for you because, and it really does come down to you. You accepted and embraced the opportunity to make some changes. And I think, speaking for myself, I've done that in my life. And you have to, when you come to a situation where something's not working right, you need to correct it. And you grabbed that advantage and took hold of it and made a huge change. And that's just going to set you on a whole new course, which is just terrific. But it really comes down to you because you used the programs and used the opportunity to really listen. And obviously, you're quite intelligent. You came around to your own conclusions about what had to happen. So congratulations is hardly the word to say, but I'm really impressed with what you said today. And hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, if, I was sitting here thinking that if you need a reference for anything, you know, screw old work, put me down.
Thank you.
And I want to shake your hand on the way out of here. And I do have to mention, I saw Mike Rupiper walk in the room. This is a day for mics, incidentally, but anyhow. Mike Rupiper walked in the room and several years ago, when I was chair of the corrections committee, Mike came to me and talked about day reporting and what was happening on the two coasts. And so, we went to Boston and we went to California to observe day reporting. And we came back and got the board to listen to it. Mike was the charger and brought people back and got it put into place. And we've had really great leadership over at the Department of Corrections that understands the need to rehabilitate, believes in redemption, all the things that really matter. So you're a wonderful product and it makes us feel good.
Thank you.
So good luck to you. But come on, I don't know who's up next. After we get done talking about you and to you, come on by so we can shake your hand.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. Briefly, a jail is pretty much out of sight, out of mind for most of the public. We know it's there. We know it's doing what it ought to be doing. And normally, you only hear bad news. You only hear if something goes wrong. You never hear if anything goes right at the jail. And so, what a great morning this is to hear your story. I very much appreciate your eloquence and your willingness to share that. Wish you nothing but the best as you strive to go in the right direction with your life now. And let me throw in one idea of church, whatever your faith may be, when you're looking for new friends, a church is a real good place to go find some of those people.
I will agree.
I've had the opportunity to help some people through that. But between your story and Joe Steinbach, I mean, the good things that are going on down there, I'm so pleased that the community can see some of the good things that are happening in our jail.
It is nice to get it out and make sure that, you know, people do see the good side of what happens, you know? Even though people do get in trouble, you know? They do have the opportunity and the choice, they can make the choice, to become better themselves, so.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Jonathan.
Commissioner Tusa.
Good morning, Jonathan.
Good morning.
You know, when we were at the jail, the corrections center, a couple of weeks ago, and we heard your story, I was totally impressed with you. But even today, I'm even more impressed because of the fact that you were able to come here in front of everybody and share your story and share your lovely recipe. I love your recipe. I think that's just totally awesome. But to share and not, to become a strong person that you have become, to share this and not be afraid of what your other peers will think of you. And I'll tell you, I give you so much credit for that. You're doing a wonderful job. You're on the right road. And just stay strong and you'll make it. I know you will. We all have confidence and you have the confidence. You can see it in you now. And it is just wonderful. And I wish you the best of luck and everything. And I hope you continue to stay in touch with us to let us know how you're doing.
I will.
Because it's really an opening experience for you to be able to share your story and your life with others. And I really thank you for that.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Jonathan, I want to thank you again. I think, I mean, here the second time, there was one piece that I definitely want to bring out and definitely for the public. And just to kind of accentuate the fact that, you know, corrections is not what it used to be in a lot of the public's and people's minds. I mean, when we were there the last time, you made the point of saying that when you were in there, there were some habits that you were learning from people or just, you were talking about the atmosphere so that you could come in there and learn some habits you probably didn't know when you came in. And I think that, you know, speaks to the fact that the order corrections has just evolved so with assessments and everything else, that a lot of the times, people question the money we may put into these things like community corrections, when actually, you know, the budget time has really made us look at the fact that it's cheaper. But one, I mean, I think scientifically, you know, there's things that say you put a person that doesn't have a hard criminal background into atmosphere with some and it makes them probably worse than it is when they left. And I think as a whole, you know, publicly, it testifies to where the world of corrections is now. It's more of a science than ever before. And just the fact that these other alternatives need to be there long-term wise, not only to put a person like you back on the track that it needs to, but also to make sure that, you know, those people that held accountable, accountable, but those people that just need a little, you know, tweak in some degree or a second chance, get that chance and never come back in. So, you know, I'm glad you took the initiative on that. And that's even from your poem, and most people know it's half the battle. But, you know, I just want to congratulate you. And hopefully, you know, this story gets out tonight and it continues to evolve the public's perception about, you know, what we do here and the other options that are available. So, you know, congratulations, appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
And further comments. You had mentioned last time that you had a support network and how important that support network was. And that is so very true. So people who get in trouble, their families, their friends need to come in and support them in their time of need. But one of the things I think this board would like to see is an update. When you get a job, let us know. In a year, would you come back to us and either at the podium or individually, tell us what's happening? The other thing is, sometimes jobs are hard to find once you have a felony conviction or even many misdemeanors. But volunteer work, such as using the skills you feel you've honed in turning people around, perhaps volunteering for the day reporting center to do some of that counseling. A lot of times, volunteer work leads to part-time work that leads to full-time work. And our volunteering through your church organization. We just would like to keep track of what's going on.
Absolutely. And I agree with the volunteering, by all means. I'm just, I don't know the avenues to go down.
We'll teach you.
All right.
But, you know, we'd like to all shake your hand. We'd like to thank you for coming up here and putting everything on the line and letting us know what you've done and how you're not going to do it again.
Absolutely.
Except for the improvement part. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Mark, we will turn the floor back to you.
Well, actually, I'm going to refer you back to Mr. Myers, and he is going to provide an update on the Second Chance Act planning grant, which supports some of these initiatives that we've been talking about this morning.
Couple of tough acts to follow this morning, but I'll do my best and we'll try to go through this relatively briefly this morning. I know we've taken up probably a greater deal of your time than we typically do. So if I talk too fast and you have any questions, feel free to interrupt, or you can always email me or call me after the fact. All right, a couple of just quick background comments. We received a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance through the Second Chance Act program. We received the notification of our successful application late last August or early September. And we, the process is probably a little bit behind because the federal government has been behind. Their budget was not set until much later in the year. There was supposed to be a conference to kind of kick all this off in February. That's been pushed back till May. So we're really just now, in earnest, getting started with the activities of this grant. The resources that this grant will provide, first of all, will be a part-time plan development coordinator. I'm not quite ready to say the name publicly, but we do have a conditional offer made that's been accepted. We're just working through the paperwork hoops, so we'll introduce that individual to you soon. We'll receive technical assistance from the National Reentry Resource Center. We'll attend their best practices conference. And we'll also, upon their advice, visit selected places, different communities that have some similarities to us, that may have some ideas that are a little bit further along than ours, and see what we can learn from other communities. We identified three target populations, groups that tend to be high-frequency users of the criminal justice system, so that we can make the maximum impact that we can with our resources. The three target groups are individuals who have been diagnosed with a mental illness and or substance abuse disorder, individuals who are homeless at the time of their incarceration or are assessed to be at high risk of becoming homeless, and youthful offenders aged 18 to 24. These groups were also selected, in addition to their being high-frequency users of our systems, they were selected because we have a frame, a foundation in place already to work with these populations. There are programs for each of these groups that exist currently. And we have the opportunity through these grant activities to really leverage the resources of those existing programs and build upon them. The elements of the plan. There are nine elements. One of the, many of these are mandatory, that were required by the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and this is one of them. We have to assess everyone for risk of recidivism. We will probably exclude those who are likely not to be released from the Department of Corrections, those who are likely to go on to state or federal prison or be deported. And also, individuals who score at a low risk to reoffend cannot receive services. It has been, research has shown that when you give, put individuals who are at a low risk to reoffend into programming design for those of higher risk, we actually make them worse. The advice we received is leave those folks alone. Let them do their short amount of time and send them on their way. Cognitive behavioral programming is a very key element of the plan. For us to achieve the recommended dosage of this, which has been shown by research to make a lasting impact, we will need to coordinate with other justice agencies in Douglas County, so that we can develop an overall curriculum that can begin behind the walls and continue seamlessly upon release through these other programs. We want to coordinate access to substance abuse and mental health services. So you can see from the agencies that are listed here, we have a lot of people who are already doing this type of business. If we hold hands and work together with those agencies, we can leverage the resources of each of them and the expertise of each of them in order to have a more comprehensive Educational and vocational programs. With our partners, the Department of Corrections, probation, Metro Community College, you know, we will, the idea is, is we will work to establish both an inside and outside network, if you will, of GED providers who are experienced in working with individuals who have recently been incarcerated or involved in the criminal justice system. We're also working very closely with Heartland Workforce Solutions and Goodwill, who does their day-to-day operations, to take advantage of all of the resources of workforce development and integrate best practices for offenders into their programs that are based in the community. And also, to bring programming inside community corrections and to the jail that are provided through workforce development funds. Develop appropriate housing options. This is a little more general goal. It's a little less specific in terms of, you know, I don't think Dr. Fox also included that in his budget to build houses this year. But we will continue to be engaged with the metro area continuum of care for the homeless. We have staff that serve on their task forces and are involved in the homeless review team to make sure that we have the best opportunities available for housing for offenders. We want to increase our reentry case management capacity. I'm going to reflect back to this at the conclusion, but the reimplementation funding piece, but should we receive the implementation funding? This was the planning version of the grant, not the implementation version. We felt like we had a lot of our kind of foundation in place, but maybe we weren't quite mature and sophisticated enough community-wide to apply for the implementation funds. Our hope is that with the assistance we receive from the National Reentry Resource Center, that we'll be in an excellent position to receive the implementation funding. We would like to reform judicial and court practice. We have the Criminal Justice Systems Management Council and we have the Reentry Initiatives Our challenge is to engage the judiciary, educate them on what our goals are, what our programs are, and hopefully get them to consider those resources when they impose a sentence. So that they know that if they do, if they come up with a certain formula, such as 90 days in jail followed by a year of probation or drug court or whatever the appropriate program is, that they know that we'll be working together as a team to provide a continuum of care for those individuals. We want to enhance service coordination through reentry initiatives council and the Criminal Justice Management Council, other criminal justice agencies, and taking this a step further into the community, the providers, the faith-based community, the nonprofit community, to work together to collectively apply the best practices to these three target Policy and legislative reform. Again, we have the two bodies that I've referred to, the Reentry Initiatives Council and the Criminal Justice Management Council. Those are, I believe, highly advantageous that those groups even exist. I think that that puts us ahead of a lot of communities. Using, have those two bodies working together and individually have an opportunity to advocate for legislative and policy change to diminish systemic barriers. There are times that we do things that we trip ourselves up in trying to help people because one level of government has policies which kind of conflict with the goals of another. So the goal is to get those folks talking and gain some understanding so that we can diminish the barriers that are inherent in our systems. Our next steps. We are just now basically electronically starting to receive our technical assistance from the National Reentry Resource Center. Our work product, if you will, is a planning and implementation guide. It is due by the end of September. A first draft is due, it's actually due by the first week of March. And when they receive that first draft, they'll look, that's kind of a snapshot of where we stand. It's an assessment as a community, how do we stand on all the issues related to reentry and according to the elements of our plan. They'll take a look at that, the National Reentry Resource Center, then they'll tailor their assistance according to that plan. And we'll update that plan several times over the next, over the course of 2012 and by the end of September, have a final version. If necessary, we'll apply for the implementation funds. The reason that I point out that if necessary is that we received some potentially encouraging news. They are leaning towards providing continued funding for implementation to, they use the term subset, of the planning grantees. We were one of 15 communities nationwide to receive this particular grant. So the worst-case scenario, we're in a, with a pool of 15 rather than applying, again, with a pool of hundreds. And they did not define how big that subset would be. So that does put a little pressure on us to perform very well in these planning grant activities because there is, there likely will not be an application for implementation funds. They'll look to fund us based upon our readiness to implement our plans. Any questions?
Commissioner Borgerson?
Mike, I have one on the group that, one of the groups we're identifying as the 18 to 24-year-old.
Yes.
And are we in connection with, working with Project Everlast? And are we in connection with, working with Project Everlast?
I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not familiar personally with Project Everlast. There's a lot of groups that access, you know, into the, into the jail, but I'm not familiar with them personally.
That one, I had the opportunity to attend a dinner meeting where three individuals that were aging out of the foster care program, or foster care system, into this Project Everlast organization. And the three individuals were young adults, like, from the ages of 19 to 20. And I'm telling you, it was the most enlightening evening, listening to their stories. I know Region 6 is involved with that group and that population, and I think it would probably be beneficial for us to also get in touch with them.
Absolutely.
And at least make that connection to reach out and get involved with, with that program.
I'll make that contact.
I see no one else, oh, Commissioner Duda?
Just want to say, this is exciting, you know, and to hear the good potential for moving on within the subset, and I'll keep up the good work.
Thank you.
There's really good things happening here, and I'm very pleased to hear all this. It's great.
Commissioner Borgeson.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Rogers for bringing all of this to the board. His leadership on these issues, both at the youth level and this level, with this particular project, really takes us to the next level of where we need to be in the community in providing these services. So, thank you for the connections you have at the national level, but thank you for bringing them here to, to us as well.
Okay, I see no one else wishes to comment. If I could ask one question, the age 18 to 24, is that hard and fast? You know, if you've got somebody who's 25 years old, but you know will benefit from this, is he excluded just because of the age?
It, my guess would be, is if we know that they could benefit, we'll work with them, especially because they're likely to probably qualify under one of the other criteria.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Mark Foxall.
Commissioners, that brings to a conclusion a rather long Board of Corrections report. Are there any other questions?
Commissioner Tusha.
Okay, just because it was a long report doesn't mean that you can get by without any questions. You ought to know me by now.
I thought perhaps.
First question, out of your 22 new correctional officers that were trained on January 16th, are all 22 still with you?
Yes, they are.
That's good to hear, good news to hear on that. On the Records Tech 1, you have, that will be starting in February, is this in-house or outsourced on, when, on that person? Did you take somebody from the management and support, or?
On the Record Tech 1?
Mm-hmm.
That's coming in from the outside.
Oh, okay. All righty. Overtime, hey, I have to say, congratulations on your overtime. That is totally awesome.
Thank you.
It really died bomb there. Of course, there's no holidays in there, I understand that, but I still have to say congratulation on that and on the sick leave. I, that's, it hasn't been this low in quite a while, and I just want to say great to you and your, your staff and all the employees for keeping track on that.
Thank you.
Another question, you had on the enclosure too, you had made a comment on there that, of course, that you had a busy January. Is there any reason for that, why it became so busy? Because you said typically you have 200 admissions, and you had 264 for January.
The community, in community corrections, they've been, the staff have really been working hard to find placements out of the main jail facility. And I think they've just redoubled their efforts. Mike Myers has talked to them, we've talked to them. We did see the population creeping up because of the, the warm weather, and I think it's just with Mike Root-Piper, Lieutenant Dan Stangle, John Scales, Mike Myers, those guys have been working really hard to get placements out of the main jail facility and into community corrections, and I think that that's just a testimony, testimony to their hard work.
Well, I appreciate their hard work on doing that. I think that's a great step to move that way. You had also on that same page, you says a list of goals for 2012, many improvements are planned. Do you want to touch base on that, or do you want to wait till a later date when you're more closer with your goals?
We have our goals in a draft form. At my next monthly meeting of my staff, I'm going to cement those goals, and then we can provide those goals to you.
Okay.
As they cross not only main jail facility, but community corrections in all areas as well.
All right. Next question, you have down here that 18 clients were escorted to the Douglas County Health Center for HIV testing. Is this random, or is this because you had reason? And how often do you do this?
In terms of the referrals, I'm sorry.
For the HIV testing?
What tab are you at?
Still on number two.
That's something that's, that's offered by one of our providers from Douglas County Health Center.
So is this just random, you just pick out just random people for this?
Sherry Naird worked with, Sherry Naird works with our population, and she makes those referrals.
Okay. All right. Will you be doing this on a monthly, all the time?
Continuous. Sherry, Sherry's been working with us for a long time in community corrections.
Okay, I guess I don't ever recall seeing that before, so, just a question on that.
It's with the health department.
Okay. All right. Congratulations on the accreditation.
Thank you.
I know that's a lot of hard work, and I see that they were very impressed with you and your staff and the center, and I agree, you guys really, really do work very, very hard to make that happen, and I want to say congratulations on that. On the average overage day shift, is there a reason why Tuesdays and Wednesdays seem to increase more than any other days on the overage?
Well, it just has to do with our regular days off, and some of that's going to change with the last shift change in January. So when those new figures are available, then I'll present them in the next monthly board report. So as shift change occurs twice a year, we adjust days off accordingly.
Okay. Yeah, I knew it was shift change, and, but, like I said, I just didn't know why Tuesday and Wednesday seemed to be slightly more increased than the other days of the week. I figured maybe weekends would be, but...
Some days it gets a little bit out of balance, but we've been working with Captain Hubbard to try to even those out across the seven days.
Okay. Appreciate that. And you did answer my last question on the female population increase, and you said you did not have to open up another, another place for that. Did you have to have any of the, any females in the boats off to the side for any periods of time?
No, not as I recall. Our female population, it peaked a little bit, but not, as I recall, did we have to put females in boats.
Okay.
Not that I recall, and that female, that third female housing unit, even today, is still closed.
And when we...
But the population is up.
And for the listening public that doesn't know what a boat is, would you please?
Yes, a boat is a device we place on the floor. It's a sleeping apparatus that an inmate can sleep in if we run out of beds. It's for very temporary use.
I, I just wanted to make sure the public didn't know we were putting them in the Platte River and stripping them to...
No, no, no.
Shouldn't bother serving.
Yeah, all right.
It resembles a boat, but it's, it's...
Yeah.
So the individual doesn't have to sleep on a mattress on the floor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. That's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
I, I want to thank you very much for the presentation today, and I don't have a problem, I don't think any of the commissioners do either, with the length. The report was very informative, and that's what this is all about. And also, I think this public forum also serves to let the public know, let the taxpayers see what's happening at the facility, which I think is very important, because there are some perceptions about what it is, that you're usually kind of the backdrop when someone's been arrested on some horrid crime, and the TV reporter's standing out in front of your building. So there's a lot more that goes inside those walls, and it's important to hear about it. It was really impressive today to hear from Joe and the success he's had making lives change, and from Jonathan, who's changed his life, and is obviously on a terrific path. And I want to thank the two Mikes, who are dedicated to making all this happen. And finally, to you, that your attitude is setting the pace and the tone over there. I think you're encouraging, I know you're encouraging people who are creative, who have the right frame of mind, who understand that the basic human element of respect for all people is really important, and I'm really proud of the work you're doing.
Thank you.
We don't take your leadership for granted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No one else wishes to speak? We need a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
Chuck you?
Thanks a lot.
Oh, it doesn't, okay. Call for the vote, please. Next, we will convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Mr. Chairman.
Here. Okay. First, we have minutes and claims. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 7th, 2012. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, February 21st, 2012. Complete listing is on file in the office of the clerk, County Clerk Comptroller, and available at the Douglas County Clerk Comptroller's webpage. Item C is Douglas County Clerk Comptroller presenting a report and requesting action on claims being submitted for payment as exemptions on Tuesday, February 14th, 2012. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
We have a motion to approve A, B, and C. If we could call for the vote, please.
Motion passes.
Next, we have our consent agenda, which consists...
Motion to approve.
Oh. The consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't even get it...
There's only two of the guests.
Well, you know, whenever there's two Mikes at the microphone, Mike gets excited.
Does he?
We, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which consists of nine items, A through I. Is there anything anyone wishes to have pulled out for discussion or get separate consideration? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes.
And next, we have recognitions and proclamations. Lee LeJure, if you could come to the front.
Sure. Members of the County Board, Lee LeJure, Director of Human Resources, Douglas County Civil Service Commission. Back in November, we recognized a number of our county employees who were called up to active duty and deployed. One of the individuals that we wanted to recognize and did recognize just briefly last time was still deployed, and he's recently returned to the United States and returned to his job the 1st of, of January, and we'd like to recognize him today. His name is Mike Rowe. And I'd like to ask Correction Officer 2 Mike Rowe to please come forward, along with his wonderful wife and his parents. As I mentioned, Mike is a correction officer 2 with Douglas County Department of Corrections. He served, serves in the U.S. military as a Petty Officer 1st Class E6. He served in the military unit of Law &amp; Order and Detachment Juliet, Navy Provisional Detainee Battalion Ramadi III, and he served on active duty in Arefane, Kuwait in 2011. And then back in 2008, 2009, he served in Tajia, Iraq. And so Mike is here today, and we'd like to recognize Mike. I believe that there is a resolution there for you.
Yes, there is. And would you like to read it, or would you like me?
If you would, I think I'd give my copy to you.
Okay. We have a resolution here from the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, which states whereas on September 11th, 2001, fundamentalist Islamic terrorists coordinated a series of attacks on the United States of America, inflicting mass casualties, and whereas in response to this horrific act, many brave young men and women joined the U.S. military to serve and defend the liberties and freedoms for our great nation, and whereas Michael P. Rowe, unselfishly, unselfishly, I hope that came out right the first time, placed himself in harm's way to fight against terrorism and to secure and support those nations seeking independence from terrorism, and whereas this board is desirous of showing its appreciation to those Douglas County employees who have given of themselves in service of their country. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board commends Michael P. Rowe for his duty in the United States military and for his actions in the preservation of the United States of America, dated this 14th day of February, 2012.
Motion approved.
And with that, we'd like to thank you and call for the vote. And Michael, if you or any of your family members, after we get an approval on this, would like to say something? We'd appreciate it if you'd come to the microphone.
Motion passes.
The floor is yours.
Mike Rowe, Corrections Officer 2, Douglas County Department of Corrections. I want to say, it's, I couldn't have done these deployments and mobilizations without knowing that I had the good employers and employee coworkers with me to support me when I came back, and a supportive family as well. I mean, if there's one thing, you know, the federal government says, hey, you have to give me my job back, but it's another that, when you come back, there's, there is, you know, great support for it. Thanks, and, and helping me get back up to speed, because while I, like I said, my wife and, I've been employed with Douglas County for, originally in 2003 and up to now, but you know, I've only been there all maybe six of those years. I've been married to my wife 10 years, I've been there for six of them. Makes, it makes employment, I guess, a little bit easier, but it also makes it a little bit more difficult to keep getting back up to speed, and everyone's been great, from Human Resources Department, Payroll Department, Training Departments, everyone's been great. Director Foxall, it's a new director I've come, come back to, and he's welcomed me back with open arms as well. And I just really appreciate all the support the county's given me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would any of the family members, we would like you to come up, and we'd like to shake your hand.
Thanks a lot. Very much for your service. You come on too, you're all important here too, you're part of the deal.
Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you for sharing your sacrifice.
Thank you for the support.
Thank you.
And thank you for your support.
And I would like to ask everyone in the, in the room here to please give a round of applause to his wife and his parents, who help make things happen here when they're back home. That's it today, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on any item that is not on the agenda? Please come to the mic. We do ask you to limit your comments to three minutes.
I understand. My name is Laura McCormick, and I own property on 451 South 84th Street. I'm here because I'm concerned about the situation in Douglas County and the manner in which District Court interacts with families, and I think I have a legitimate complaint, and I, and I would like you to bear with me as I explain some of this. In terms of how my, I became entangled in District Court, it started when my husband filed for divorce in February 2010. My husband's parting words to me were, "If you cooperate, you will be provided for. If not..." The temporary orders in our case were heard in April 2010, two months after he left. What that means is that, and they were not signed by the judge, what that means is that there are no enforceable court orders for very important things like child support, alimony, or parenting time. Can't be enforced, there's no signed court order. Temporary orders were finally signed in June 2010. That would be four months after he left. I was a stay-at-home mom. I took care of my kids, my family. I hadn't worked in 20 years. So finally, in June 2010, I had court orders that mandated child support, alimony, and parenting time. I never received the court-ordered funds to defend myself in the litigation, even though Dad is a top 1% earner in our state, and I was a stay-at-home parent for 18 years. I didn't file for divorce. I didn't invite the state into my house. The Parenting Act specifically talks about economic abuse between partners, and yet the activities of the Douglas County court system, the way it's set up right now, promote the very economic abuse they are supposed to protect citizens from. I don't understand how that's possible. My son left... My son left in October of 2010, per a court order. I've talked about this before. I sat on a bench outside the courtroom in the Douglas County courthouse, and a judge who made this decision never met me, never saw me, never talked to me. That was the worst day of my life, and it's hard to articulate in words what it's like. I left the courthouse in tears because I knew what was going to happen, further destruction of my family. That experience brought me to my knees. The loss of my son very nearly broke me. This same order, it was never signed until December 2010.
You have one minute left.
The change in physical possession occurred in October. There is no formal record as to what occurred, as all business was conducted off the record in judges' chambers. My husband's attorney is the individual that requested the appointment of attorneys for my children. Dad took the child to a guardian ad litem without my knowledge at the time I had legal custody. The guardian ad litem never spoke to me. She never met me. She never saw me interact with my child. This same court order mandated family counseling.
And we are going to ask you to wrap it up, because-
Okay, I will. The order mandated assignment of two attorneys, guardian ad litem, I don't know what they are. The sum total that has been expended on this in my family, right now, we're sitting at $40,000, and we're not done yet. I'm three days into a five-day trial, 50 grand.
Okay.
What, can I please finish speaking?
May I make a comment? All of these are interesting, but none of them pertain to anything that we, as the County Board, can accomplish.
I-
Where we're required by law to fund the courts, but constitutionally, we cannot control the courts. So anything you say here, it's interesting, as I said, and we're concerned about it, but we cannot do anything about it. You need to take it to, you know, I'm not sure where you would need to take it to.
That's exactly my point, sir, and with all due respect, I wish that you would let me, I'm nearly done speaking, and I-
We will give you 30 more seconds.
The other thing I wish to say is that the same court order mandated that my family was to engage in counseling. The counselor performed, I guess, as a mediator, even though there was no signed mediation agreement. This individual submitted invoices to the court that materially differ from the invoices submitted to me. Why is this relevant to you? Because Douglas County is paying for these services.
Correct.
That's why this is important.
We pay for it, but we cannot control it. We pay for it because-
No, please wait.
We're constitutionally required to. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Lori, for being here and kind of continuing our conversation about these. While we may not have direct authority over those issues, I think it's important that those issues are brought to our attention so that we can work. We work collaboratively with the courts. I mean, we have a committee, we have lots of committees that work with the courts. And so your case would be one that I would think that we should do a, you know, something like a case review and get answers as to why did it take four months after a court order was ordered to be signed? Why were things happening such as what you just talked about on the guardian ad litem that you never met? Things never happened, but it was still ordered. I mean, I think these are all legitimate things that should be brought to our attention to have us take and work with collaboratively with the agencies within the court system to figure out the answers to these. So if you could provide us with what you were reading as a timeline, that would be helpful for-
I surely can.
For any discussion we have.
And I guess my, the thing I want to say, okay, after $50,000 is spent on this, I was not allowed to spend a single holiday with my son. I was not able to see him on his birthday. I have done nothing wrong. And I was explaining to the police officer outside that, who I was talking to, if somebody would have told me my story, I would have listened to it and thought, there's got to be something wrong with her. She must abuse her children. If this can happen to me, it can happen to anyone, and it's not right. And I, as a taxpayer, am paying for guardian ad litem, I know I am, and you all can't see the financial documents. The reason why I even, and I have a stack of them right here that we can talk about, some of them that don't make any sense. I've had to subpoena some of the correspondence that these people have amongst themselves, and they talk about wine meetings at Bistro 121. I'm paying for this. You guys are paying for this, too. Every citizen in our county is.
Are you, are you a part of the, or no, of the family advocacy group? That's kind of an-
Melanie's mother, uh-huh. Yeah, I've met her via Stephanie.
Through the family fort, right.
Mm-hmm.
That may be one that could be helpful in these cases, just as a suggestion, but-
Well, the last thing I will say is that I am thankful for Judge Doherty. Without him, I would never have been able to see my own son on Christmas Day. He has finally listened and granted me parenting time, and I will be eternally grateful for that.
Good, I'm glad. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers? No? Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to discuss or inform us of anything not on the agenda? This is the public commentary time. Seeing none, we will go on to the next item. Just lost my place there. Oh, which is the Budget Committee. Thank you.
The report is as presented.
Okay.
Nothing else, nothing new to report.
Is there anything on the Administrative Services?
Nothing today, thank you.
Child and Youth Services, Commissioner Rogers. The Child and Youth Services has a standing meeting on the first Tuesday of every month at 1:00 PM at the Omaha Douglas Civic Center, Room 903. Commissioner Duda, Community Services. Criminal Justice, Commissioner Boyle, do you have anything else to add?
No, we had a good report from Corrections today.
Yes, we did. And Health and Human Services, Commissioner Borgerson.
Okay. So, you know, there is one thing I want to add, oddly enough. I got a really-
It's too late.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Please continue.
We had a, I had, received, I don't use Facebook a lot, but I got something on Facebook about people at Mutual of Omaha who are answering phones 24 hours a day or whatever, they have all these people working. Their workstations are treadmills, some of them. And I read that, and someone sent it to me, and someone made a comment, a taxpayer said, you know, this is something we should have done at the Department of Corrections a long time ago. So I passed that on to Mark Conry, and he's looking into it. So we may have-
You mean 911?
Yeah.
Oh, you said Corrections.
Oh, I'm sorry, 911, yeah. Thank you. So anyway, we'll see what happens. Maybe they'll have treadmills out there, and if they do, maybe I should get a job out there.
Well, we could just hook one up right now.
Yeah, never mind, never mind.
Next, Human Resources. We have the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Are there any questions on that? Okay. And next are legislative issues. We have two items, Amendment 1958 to LB 956, and Commissioner Borgerson.
Yes, this is an amendment to the bill, and we're only taking a position on this amendment. And the amendment to the bill basically for, I mean, I'm just going to read it because it's pretty self-explanatory. "For a municipality located in a county in which 90% or more of the residents of the county are also residents of the municipality, or the municipality's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, no sales tax and use tax shall be imposed at a rate greater than 1.5% or increase to a rate greater than 1.5% unless the municipality is a party to an interlocal agreement pursuant to the Interlocal Agreement Cooperation Act, or a joint public agency agreement pursuant to the Joint Public Agency Act with the county in which the municipality is located, creating a separate legal or administrative entity." Now, there's been some comment back that the 90% is probably too high. It should probably be 80%. So it would read for a municipality located in a county in which 80% or more of the residents of the county are also residents of the municipality. And as we get this, I'm going to ask that that be a friendly amendment, that it be 80 instead of 90.
Question, if I may?
Uh-huh.
Didn't it also include the extraterritorial jurisdiction, as well as the city?
Yes.
So in that case, I mean, we're well over the 90 if you include the three-mile ETJ.
It's, well, it can include, or also include.
Fine.
Or the municipal, so if you, I guess you have a choice of leaving them in or out. Anyway, that was what was brought up, is that it would be 80%.
Fine.
The other, I'm not real, I think if, if we support this amendment, which I think we should, it should stop after it says pursuant to the Interlocal Cooperation Act and not go on to talk about the other joint public agency agreement, where you're creating a separate agency. I think it should, we should use the Interlocal Agreement Act that's on the books in order for us to pursue anything of this matter, but not creating a new legal entity of any kind, that we should stay within that Interlocal Agreement Act. So I would ask that that last part be deleted out. And so again, the changes would be the 80 to 90, and then cross out everything after the Interlocal Agreement Act. And I would make a motion to support that with those-
Support the amendment with those.
With the changes.
I will second.
And Commissioner Duda, do you have further comments?
No, no.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Okay. Motion passes.
Next, we have LB 902, Consideration to Redefine a Term Relating to Property Tax Exemptions and Change Provisions Related to a Sales Tax Exemption for Purchases by the State or Government Unit. Commissioner Borgerson?
Well, and again, this is a bill that, well, the federal government has declared that these corporations to be nonprofits by their rules, the state has taken a different view. And so basically what we're saying is that in our case, any governmental subdivision, meaning us if we buy property and lease it out, that it still remains tax exempt, versus now they're saying that they would have to pay taxes. Rick?
The change in regulations were, it was a change by the Nebraska Department of Revenue that looked at what government entities or nonprofit corporations were going to be receiving a property tax, and it was the state that changed, or that reviewed their rules and made a recent ruling that what was previously thought to be tax exempt would no longer be tax exempt.
One of these, a perch lease agreement, say for instance, on our N-Cor Group homes, they come into play on this. So there's a lease-purchase agreement for those homes, those are tax exempted, were tax exempt, but now they're saying that they're not. And so this would change that and be in line with how the IRS defines it, or always has defined it. So I would ask that we support this.
Sir? Commissioner Boyle?
I'm definitely in favor of this and tend to vote for it. I want to bring to the attention of the Board a meeting that Commissioner Borgerson and I had when she was chair with the Omaha Housing Authority. The director came in along with legal counsel, and our legal counsel was present, as well as Joe Lorenz. And we spoke about, they spoke about the problem they're having with having to pay property taxes on similar facilities where they have built homes and so forth, and they have to pay taxes because they're not, they're Omaha Housing Authority buildings and so forth, but they're financed through a mechanism where people get tax credits, and so they're taxed, they have property taxes on them, and they've been paying them for years. And apparently, there's a state law that allows the, allows the County Board to give them some relief, which we haven't discussed, but it's something that I'd like to bring forward. Commissioner Borgerson is not in favor of it, obviously I am, so, but maybe I'll bring it up for an agenda soon, not next week, which is not meeting, but I'll put it on the agenda for us to discuss and see if there's someplace for us to find some support for the housing authority that is struggling with paying property taxes. And there are other, I'm no longer on the board of the Holy Name Housing Corporation, but they too have that problem, where they finance a renovation of a large building, they have senior citizens and they're low income, all these restrictions and so forth, and they're paying property taxes on the facilities. And it happens in South Omaha, the Corrigan School project, they're paying, elderly housing out there is taxed. And I just wonder, you know, I've had a long discussion with Mike Goodwilly about it, and I don't win when I discuss it with him. But anyway, he's someone that we should consult. So I'll bring it forward to the Board.
Commissioner Borgerson?
And I think the only difference is, Mike, from what we're talking about here is that it's a private entity that's buying them, not the nonprofit or governmental body, but-
Exactly.
We can continue to chat.
Sure.
Always like talking to you.
I do, too. Same with you, Ken. Even when I let my chair down in the middle of meeting, sinking it, I was reaching to, I was reaching to adjust the back, and I did this. Right during the presentation.
Is there any further discussion on this issue? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes.
There is a need to go into executive session to discuss items related to labor negotiation, litigation, and before we go into executive session, there's a notice that Douglas County offices will be closed Monday, February 20th, 2012, in observation of President's Day. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners will not meet on Tuesday, February 21st, and the next scheduled meeting is the Tuesday, February 28th, at 9:00 AM here in these chambers. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Mike threw everybody off track.
Motion passes.
We can follow it up with a release. And Commissioner-
Is there a second?
Are you a yes, Mr. Chairman? Yes, okay. Motion passes.